Good morning. You're recording? Okay, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Tuesday, September seventeenth, regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Before you, you have today's agenda. There is one modification to item number ten that I would like to add. It is adding an additional eighty-four fifty to the add a consulting service geotech engineering for a total price of forty-six seven fifty. Tiger will address it, but you have information on this agenda item on your tablet at the end, at the end. Could I get a motion to amend that agenda item?
So move.
Was it eight thousand four hundred?
Eight thousand four fifty.
Four fifty, okay.
Uh huh.
Second.
It's unanimous. Thank you. And could I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So move.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Before we go into approval of the minutes, I would just like to take, ask for a moment of silence in honor of Elliot, a senior at New Canaan High School who passed away on Saturday night. You know, it's a tragedy for the community and I would just ask for thoughts and prayers to his family from the community. Thank you. We have the minutes from our regular meeting on September tenth. Are there any additions or corrections anyone would like to make? If I could get a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Comments submitted electronically should be sent to the following email address. B O S distribution at newcanonct.gov. Anyone wishing to address the board? Nope. Okay, moving on. If Police Department building update. Bill, Joe, up Penny? No, we've got, it's not even Bill. Sorry, I didn't. Sorry.
We thought it's Jim and I.
I know. You know, I'm feeling like old home week for me, being a former Board of Ed member, you know? You know? Jim and Penny were the duo on Saks on South School. I mean, it's just.
Always see this team together.
Welcome and thank you.
We were just, basically, it's good news, so we'll be really short. We're on time, on budget, under budget. We've got close to one point four million left between the owner's contingency and the construction manager's contingency, which is not under control, but if it's not spent, we'll come back to the town at the end. And the construction is going well with an estimated move-in date. We're aiming toward maybe June for the police to go back into the station. If you'd like a tour, it's, you know, it's actually, Leanne, I know you go, but I went last week and it's really shaping up. And you can sort of see how the new building will function, including the new back stair, which I hadn't really focused on, which I think will be terrific in terms of efficiency for police operations. Joe has some pictures.
Penny, just remind us, so if we move in the summer, that's how far ahead of schedule a couple of months.
Three, five, six months.
Which is a lot, so.
Yeah, because you have your, you know, monthly costs for keeping the team on, so keeping, picking up the time has saved us, saved us money.
And then we'll save on the monthly cost of the project as well.
What else do you want?
The Bill had told us about some functionality, though. It's just one thing to move into the building. It's another thing to actually have it fully up and running and functioning. So there's some sort of transition that has to take place right.
We're expecting to be fully operational this summer.
Wow, that's amazing.
We don't want to push it because everything is working very well, you know, in, in where we're located now, but we'll certainly be as efficient as we possibly can.
A lot of things to go, so no things can happen.
And am I correct in saying that the contingency, a million is left on our side and four hundred on?
Approximately, I think it's around nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, and five hundred. Okay, okay.
Some of that will get spent down. There'll be unforeseen things or, you know, that's, it's why it's there for a purpose, but I highly doubt we'd go through everything.
Yeah.
We don't control the constructive contingency, but we're getting to the point where fewer and fewer surprises are ahead of us.
Yep. Now, can you just maybe, I was at the police commission or the building meeting this week and there was some discussion of a transformer being moved. Is that, and some delay?
That's accounted for what we just told you.
Okay, more, and so the timing is also accounted for because there's, okay, okay, that's what I just wanted to understand.
And Turner is very good about those timelines. When you meet with Turner, they're buttoned up. If you, if they'll tell you whether or not they're going to be ahead or behind. They're one of the best as far as.
We got the library team.
There's the Saks team and we have the high school.
You just keep rolling over into the next project, so, okay.
I do have a presentation. It's similar to the one that was given to the Board of Finance. And I know that you guys attend regularly the meetings, the committee meetings, so I'll go through it very quickly or to whatever extent you want me to.
Quickly is good.
Okay, so I'm just going through, I'd like to, you know, thank the committee. They've been working on this project since early twenty twenty-two. So there's a lot of work that everyone puts in reviewing contracts with Penny and Jim, you know, a couple of years ago. So just quickly, we were able to save the nineteen twenty-eight building. This is the addition in the rear. The addition is what's being framed up right now. So from the Board of Finance update, since then, we have, excuse me, we have started the cold form metal framing of the exterior of the building. So you'll actually start to see the envelope starting to get closed in. This is the, the building as it existed in June, and this is it basically as it looks today. So you can see that we've, we've done all the, all the restoration of the facade, all the dental work that's up top. You can't see the the cupola, but it is, is, part of it is restored and on site. And the other part will be coming in and be placed already constructed on top of the building and it'll look exactly the same as it did previously.
Joe, are these the new windows? Are they the old windows that still need to be replaced? These are, great.
No, no, these are, we have to swap out the, to get the appropriate coating.
Okay, so these still need to be swapped out.
The whole windows, they're, they're, they're the new windows. There'll be new glass installed in the window. So the sashes will come out and they'll be replaced with the appropriate.
So we're still waiting for that.
The answer I gave was it's the new design.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just.
Yeah, so by now you won't even notice that. They're going to do it one window at a time. It's basically taking out the sash and putting it back.
It's actually, as we've told, but this is the old design. These are the nineteen twenty-eight cell windows.
Okay, okay. Well, and it sounds like, given what I heard at the, one of the meetings, it may actually be, you know, not financially a blessing, but, you know, now they can work in that space and not worry about the windows as much as, you know, now we'll have some brand new windows at the, at the end, so.
Yeah, so I think the comedy made was, you know, basically washed down the building for like an acid product. Sometimes it's hard to protect the windows. There's some etching can happen on the window so that, you know, that problem goes away. You know, a challenge. This is as it looked in June. This is as it looks, as it looked, I would say today, but this was basically from, from last week. Now you'll see that there's actually framing of the exterior walls. That's, that's happening. This is just looking forward from EMS. Again, this is the, this is the building addition over here to the left. The two Sallyport bays, and then this is an open canopy. These are the new windows looking from the inside. This is the level of finishes on the third floor. We're way ahead of the, on the third floor. And the ceiling, all the mechanic, above ceiling mechanicals installed, we're, we have ceiling grid. It's just, we're very, very close to being able to pad out the ceiling. So it's, this area is basically like, I would say it's like eight weeks from being done. We won't do it right away because we don't want to damage the products while we're in there. But it's, it's that, that close to being finished, done, done. This is the forensic lab. We've installed a lot of millwork on the, the third floor ready. Lockers, etc., on the third floor. So again, way, way ahead of that one. Slide. The project timeline, we've hit all our major milestones. We're trending right now to June of twenty twenty-five. The original was a Thanksgiving completion date of twenty twenty-five, so we're ahead of schedule. Some of the project milestones, we installed the last piece of steel on August nineteenth. The interior renovation, as I mentioned, is, is basically scheduled for the third and second floor. We're waiting for the addition to basically be able to tie in all the mechanical equipment across the way into the addition. The addition, like I said, is being framed out now. There'll be a temporary roof installed next week, so it'll be watertight, so we can start all the mechanical stuff inside. So again, this was a fall/winter of twenty twenty twenty.
Four twenty-five, sorry.
Yeah. So, so, and we're, again, making the building tight, working, working on the site work and installing permanent power and finishing spaces.
Hey, Joe, what's the positive delta if we move in in June between not having, you know, the, the site work, you know, fixed costs we have, and then also not having the lease expense over at the?
So, so the lease expense is thirty-two thousand a month, thereabouts, so we would save that for every month.
Five months.
We were early.
Right.
And then the Turner had basically baked in a more aggressive schedule, so we won't see a big savings on that, but we will see an expense for the additional months of either.
But, you know, there have to be notices and things, so we won't get every.
Sure.
To go back, but we'll get, we'll get some.
A three-month, three-month.
So we have to make a call, we have to make a call the springtime.
Yeah, and is, is that, you know, that, that potential, I want to say savings, lack of expense? Is that built into?
We have it.
So a little bit more coming our way. Keep it up.
Yeah, so the, the, actually, there will be savings that's on the soft side, the soft cost side for the rental of, of the buildings. That's still included and hasn't been transferred over. Obviously, we will make sure that all the risks are behind us before we transfer more money into contingency. So the contingency, as far as the update, I think we went, went through it. Five hundred ninety-one, this is as of a data date of September fifth, so it has changed a little since the last meeting. I just haven't updated it, but it hasn't of any consequence. So we've authorized, the, the committee has authorized five hundred ninety-one thousand dollars in changes to be funded for contingency. We have three hundred and seventy-two thousand reserved for known changes or project risks. So those, when we know there's a risk or there's a new drawing or there's some additional work that's being, that was drawn up and that we're, we're asking for, we cover, we cover the risk where the, this is the basket that basically captures all the risks in the project. So that, that brings us to about, between, we're, we're basically between nine hundred thousand and, and a million dollars.
Actually, we're a little closer to a million, gentlemen, than nine hundred.
Yeah, and there's the five hundred and one thousand dollars for the Turner contingency, which via contract, it's, it's, it's really their contingency, but it becomes the town contingency at, at the end. So we're looking at those dollars. We control those dollars to a certain extent.
Okay, so it transfers back if they don't use it?
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
A hundred percent dollar for dollar. And, and that's really it. I send out the detailed cost reports to, to you three, or all, all CC'd on, on the committee. Last that I send out before the meetings. We have, you know, just for anyone from the general public, we meet on the second and fourth Thursday of every month, so everyone's welcome to attend. They want to, you know, hear a little deeper dive into the costs. And on Wednesday mornings, we walk through kind of as a, as a rule. I know a lot of people have walked through, people from the Board of, you know, you, you all have walked through, and there's also been walkthroughs from the Town Council and some members of the Board of Finance as well.
Just no forums. No forums.
Oh, yeah.
So, and that's it. So any, any other questions?
Any questions?
Great job.
No, thank you. You guys are really, it's a tight ship over there, so thank you very much for all your work and efforts to make this happen. Very exciting.
It is exciting.
All right, moving on to Housing Authority and Scott. I know it's a magic trick. It is a magic trick. There you go.
A little deja vu that I think the first committee I ever sat on for in New Canaan was Police Commission or the Police Department Building Committee in two thousand two. We're getting lightning speed here. This is really good.
Traditional government, right?
So here, just asked for release of funds from the Affordable Housing Fund in order to be used by the Housing Authority for affordable housing activities.
So to, to, to step back just one step, so this transfer out of the, out of the towns' funds into the Housing Authority funds is for reimbursement of development fees, which is a, you know, approved use of funds. So, and I think there's still additional developer fees that the Housing Authority still, you know, this is not all the developer fees they incurred through Canaan Parish in Millport, so.
Correct. We actually, we were, we were paid in full for our Canaan Parish, which was good. But for Millport Apartments, Millport One and Millport Phase Two, we had carried a deferred developer fee for many years now. And at this point, finally, there's money inside of the funds and there's a good use for it, so.
Any questions?
We've seen this, we've seen this play before.
Yeah.
So it's great. I mean, it's just, it's more progress, so, and thank you, Scott, for everything you're doing to, to get us there.
We are very blessed. All right, if there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the New Canaan Housing Authority for an appropriation of one million, one hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for reimbursement of total deferred developer fees from the Mill Apartments, Millport One and Millport Two Construction Project, as agreed upon at the time of construction.
So move.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. Hey, Todd, Wavine Trail Repair.
Good morning, everyone. So the New Canaan Parks Department is seeking Selectman approval to enter into contract with Hussey Bros. Excavating out of Norwalk, Connecticut. This repairs to the walking trails at Wavine Park. The trails were washed away from the storm on August eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. This is an emergency repair. The total cost is thirty-one thousand dollars, and the money is available in the general fund budget.
Where were the?
The washouts?
Washouts, yeah.
So first on the castle side, starting from the west parking lot and walking down to Lapham Road, and then the trail heading to the Lapham Center. And then if you came up the hill from South Avenue, that kind of pitched hill on the left-hand side, across from Tiger Trail there, that was washed out also.
So these are different trails than the trails we just approved money for.
Okay, and these are emergency repairs, because I think, you know, my first question normally at this level would be, you know, did you get a number of quotes for this, this volume of repair work? But because it was an emergency repair, they didn't have to do that.
They do, excuse me, they do have cross-country starting up there and stuff, and they do run along the side trails up there, so.
And, and I know that storm was incredible, right? So as we build the trails going forward, and you can't plan for all the weather stuff, but is there, is there a different construction going on that maybe makes them less likely to wash out, or is it just the top?
Topography, Tiger, you have anything on that?
And again, you know, when you get huge rain, you know, what you just do.
So the one on the hill that follows the road in, that's washed out a couple of times. That, way in from Lapham Road, right on the right-hand side, hasn't that washed out a couple of times?
We've had, we had issues on, if you're, if you're heading on Wavine Road from the house down to Lapham on the left-hand side. Subsequent to that, we actually put in larger swales on either side. The problem that we have there is that we can't make them too deep. It was Steve Banko's concern, God bless him, was the fact that people in the night during like concerts and stuff like that, if we make it too deep, they won't, they won't understand the change in topography, so we had to make them slight, but we made them larger. There, we had a problem too on the, from the house leading down towards the four-way intersection, heading towards South Avenue at the bottom of the hill. That one, we put in deeper ditches on either side of that because they're there. It's just the trail. The rest of it is a forest understory. Problem with this was just volume, literally, volume had.
It was a lot of rain.
Yeah, yeah, but we have, we have, where, where we've seen issues, we've gone and repaired and tried to make them better. This, we wouldn't have been able to handle. That's seven plus inches, eight inches of rain.
But still going forward to the extent we can, we're trying to.
Going forward, yeah.
Give it a little defense.
At each trail, we try to look and see where we're having, where we're having a washout, where we've been having problems, and then put in drainage or a drainage swell or other, you know, raise the trail slightly, like we talked about last week, as far as that, the one that was approved last week, we'll be raising that slightly to then allow it to stay above the water that, that ponds down in that area.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah.
Any other questions? If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Parks Department to enter into a contract with the Hussey Brothers excavating in the amount of thirty-one thousand dollars. The project entails the emergency repair to the walking trails at Wavine Park. It's unanimous. Thank you. Melick Field Netting, Todd.
So again, the Parks Department is seeking a Selectman approval to enter into contract with JGB Sports out of Middlesex, New Jersey. This repairs at a third base side net and pole that was damaged also in the August eighteenth storm when a tree fell and took out the net and bent the poles. The net is, excuse me, the net and system is used to protect balls from going over into the playground area on the left field side. The total net repair cost is ten thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. We did recommend a twenty percent contingency due to the vendor giving a quote off of pictures and measurements we sent to him for two thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars with the total amount of twelve thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars.
So Todd, basically, this is a whole new net from, almost from the?
It'd be from where the turf meets the grass going all the way out to left field, so, and it's a, like a double-tier net, so the lower tier got ripped by the tree that fell, and it took down, when it fell, it took down the pole and bent it.
This is more of the same storm that created.
Exact storm, yes.
Yeah.
Close the field now. We temporarily fixed the net.
We've added this to our figures, though, Tiger, for, no, for Ross and his calculations.
For FEMA.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, any questions?
Go ahead.
Yep. All right, if not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Parks Department to enter into a contract with JGB Sports in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars plus a contingency of two thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars for a total cost of twelve thousand nine ninety-one. The project entails the repair of side netting and pole on the baseball field at Melick Field.
So move.
Second, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ryan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On behalf of the New Canaan Parks Department, I am here seeking approval to enter into contracts with Hussey Bros. Excavating LLC to remove and reset the granite curbing for the Wavine Fitness Area. This service is the final prep work for the port and place surfacing, and it sets the final elevation for the equipment. The amount for this service is eight thousand seven hundred dollars, and I added a ten percent contingency of eight hundred dollars, making the total of nine thousand five hundred dollars, and the money is available within the Parks Department Playground Replacement Account.
Any questions?
How quickly do they get that done?
With the rain in the forecast for the next like three days, I'm hoping he can still work in the, in the rain, but hopefully within the next two weeks or so.
I drove by the other day. It looked, it's really coming along.
Not loving the black surround right now, but.
I know, we're pushing through. We've actually had some phone calls asking when it's going to be done, and we're pushing forward, so looking forward to the final results and.
Do you have any issue with people hopping in there messing around on it?
Not yet, although the old fitness areas for thirteen and up, and every time I'm driving through there, there's young kids with their babysitters and, but that's something that the sign is up there and, but people just don't listen sometimes, so.
Excellent. All right, so if there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Parks Department to enter into a contract with Hussey Brothers Excavating LLC in the amount of eighty-seven hundred dollars plus a contingency of eight hundred dollars for a total cost of ninety-five hundred dollars. The project entails the removal and installation of new material for the fitness equipment.
So move.
Second, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
All right, Joe.
Good morning again. So I'm here for the New Canaan Nature Center, the demolition of the pedestrian ramp, which is the west side of the greenhouse. You might not even, ever even noticed it. It's the old greenhouse that's all the way at the end of the property, and it's facing off into the woods. It's covered by some trees. So anyway, it's at the end of its, its usable life, and we want to make sure that it doesn't create any sort of hazard because they still use that exit over on that side of the building.
Joe, I'm sorry, I'm trying to picture this. So this is, this is.
Next to the, the main.
Yeah, is it the top structure?
Okay.
So there's one that connects the nineteen ninety-esque building to the, to the older greenhouse.
Yeah.
And then there's one that goes off into the, off into the woods. It's actually like a, it's, it's literally a ramp. That's like an elevated deck over on one side, and there's a ramp on the, on the other. So you can barely, again, you can, you can barely see it. It's behind a, like a potting shed, some sort of like decorative potting shed, and then a couple sheds over there. There is a little, a little like koi pond out there behind there, so I don't know if you've ever been back there, and there's trails that you can access over there. But it's not really something yet you would, you would ever notice, so. So the processes will, will coordinate with the New Canaan Nature Center to schedule the, you know, so there's minimal disruption over there. We need to safe off the electrical that is on and under the ramp. There's some, some, again, some pumps to the fish ponds. There's some convenience outlets. There's just a bunch of nits and gnats for electricity that would need to be safed off. And then the, the ramp is physically cut off the, the side of the building and, and dropped. Some of the actual ramp is supported by a, a foundation, so it'll be, it's basically going to be dismantled. And it, unfortunately, you need a jackhammer to do some of the work, so it's going to be noisy. That's why I'm going to schedule very closely with Bill Flynn. I already spoke with him, and there's a couple of windows of time where, where we think we could, we can do it. So at the end, the foundation of the ramp will be taken out, so it will leave a little bit of, a little bit of earthwork to do. There'll be a little divot, so we'll have to restore that area to make it look nice. It'll actually look, it'll be a big improvement because you'll, you'll be able to see the, the donated little ponds that are back there. And then, lastly, we're going to have to hook back up the electrical to the fish ponds. And then this isn't included in, in this price, but it's just work that's going to have to be done. And then there's paver work that needs to be.
The electricity work is not part of this estimate.
So the, so the saving off for the demolition is included in the price. And then I will, I will have to come back for just a small amount of electricity work to hook back up the pumps. So, so there's something that's active, but it's fed and connected to the deck, so we have to remove it and, and refeed the electrical.
And there's enough money in the approved.
There's fifty thousand. There's fifty thousand dollars for this project in overall. So we're at, you know, we're at, we're at, oh, no, we're at thirty, we're at thirty-two. The electrical work will be very small. It's just, it's.
They might not be coming back here.
Correct. Well, yeah, well. It'll be small. It'll be small. There'd just be a, a small amount of restoration, you know, if, if, so what happens is when we, we, we have to chase the foundations underground a little bit. We don't want to leave a foundation in the ground for someone else's problem or our problem in another ten years. So there is a couple of, of pathways that are out there that are, that are pavers. So in speaking with Bill, I think we would, Bill Flynn, we would, we've just basically removed to the extent we have to and just, and just in the sake of it being a nature center, it would just be grass, you know, over, over in that area. But there might be one pathway that they want to connect because it's used for, for schoolchildren.
So there's no longer a door there then, right? Where it had to lead, the door let out on.
So.
So you shore up the door.
So we.
Board it up somehow, or was?
Correct. They, we walked, I walked through with the, the fire marshal. They're okay. There's adequate. Correct. They, we walked, I walked through with the, uh, the fire marshal. They're okay. There's adequate exits in the building. So there's no reason to have that door. So, uh, we'll just remove the exit sign and, and safe off the door. And how does, it's not, the upstairs is not used for anything except for, you know, storage.
And there was, this is not, not like an ADA issue with the ramp going away or anything.
No.
Okay.
And there is a long-term hope by the nature center to completely redo that space. So they only use it the downstairs for classroom space.
Yeah. And the, and the existing ramp is, is an ADA compliant anyway. So it would be, if, if they, any future use would have to redo a ramp if they ever needed one or wanted one.
So the electricity is turned off to the pond for a period of time and the fish going to live?
Uh, if, if I have to run an extension cord.
As all preschoolers are gonna, you're gonna have crying preschoolers if we.
I will, um, make sure we don't kill the fish.
Just checking.
Or relocate them if need be.
You know, Joe, I just had one question. I've never seen this vendor before. Have you used, uh, this vendor before?
Complete dismantling services. I went out to, um, just, um, we received two proposals. Um, they are a vendor that's, that the town is familiar with. I am not personally familiar with them. Um, but, uh, Brian Platts, um, that is used very often in town. And, and actually Jen gave them a, a, a good review as far as getting their paperwork into, to her. So.
Okay.
If she gives them a good review.
Yeah, no, she's.
Busy with a bunch of other.
Yeah, no, no, we don't want to distract them. I, I just want to make sure we have a good vendor there. So, okay. Any other questions? If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into two contracts as follows. Complete dismantling services for thirty thousand five hundred and ninety eight dollars and Darian Electric for three thousand dollars. The project entails the demolition of the pedestrian ramp, um, of the greenhouse at New Canaan, New Canaan Nature Center.
Same.
Second.
Unanimous. Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, Tiger Erwin.
All right. Good morning. So this first item, as you mentioned, this is the one with revised agenda or events. So, um, this is for, uh, development of the, uh, construction documents for the Erwin, um, Park Boardwalk, the Wetland Boardwalk. Uh, Richter and Seegan has done the, uh, work on the schematic design and the design development. We went through some permitting so far. We've got some other permitting that, uh, is required. Um, and then this will bring us from Richter and Seegan's standpoint, all the way through bidding services. Um, we had, as part of this final portion of the design, um, since we're using diamond piers, uh, the manufacturer, the diamond pier is, uh, requesting that a structural engineer take a look at the overall, um, design of the boardwalk. And then the structural engineer, based upon the fact that we're in, um, wetland soils, is asking for a geotech to come in and take a look. So the reason for the change in, uh, the agenda was that originally the structural engineer was nested under Richter and Seegan. If he's nested under Richter and Seegan, there's an administrative fee associated where Richter and Seegan charges fifteen percent. So we decided we'll contract direct with, uh, CNC engineering. Um, and then, uh, we had to add the, uh, down to earth consulting. Um, the, uh, their DTE, uh, is their, is their acronym, um, for the eighty four fifty. So overall, it's, uh, thirty two thousand five hundred, uh, contract or a contract extension with Richter and Seegan for thirty two thousand five hundred. Um, contracted with the CNC engineering for fifty eight hundred dollars for structural engineering. And then a contract with down to earth consulting for the geotech at eight thousand four hundred and fifty for a combined total of forty six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And the funds are currently available in the Erwin Park Boardwalk account.
So Tiger, can you just walk us through? So how much of the boardwalk, uh, expense, uh, is the town on the hook for versus the garden club?
We have a, we, we had a, um, a, um, a budget of a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. That was, uh, uh, given to us a year, a couple of years ago by the, by the boards during the budget cycle. And then subsequent to that, either they'll have to come back for additional funding or, or the garden club will be on the hook for the remaining portion. Right now, we're looking at a five hundred to six hundred thousand dollar construction cost. It's one of the reasons why we want to go to bid documents is to then actually get a firm bid. Then we'll know the firm number. Then we can then seek to fundraise through the garden club or, um, look for additional funding from the town.
And how much of the hundred and seventy five after the, is it just the one seventy five minus the forty six seventy five year?
No.
Drawn down on that account as well.
We had drawn down on the account for the, uh, schematic design and the design development. We'll have approximately, uh, eighty eight thousand dollars left in the account.
So is this the approximate all-in cost? Is this right? Seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars?
Yes.
And I only say, because I remember when this came before the Board of Finance, the all-in projected costs, I don't think was anything near that. Um, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe I recall it wrong, but that's, that's a big ticket item to, I'm, I'm just saying to, to spend all this design money on this. Are we sure we're gonna be able to figure out where another half a million bucks is coming for? How, how long is this boardwalk? I mean, how, how many linear feet? It's not super.
It's about a thousand feet.
I'm just, you look at it, sure, it would be nice, right? But that to me seems like a, a very large, um, fundraising need or from a town perspective, given all the stuff we're facing, it's, it's like a, it's a, a large amount of money for.
There's also a look, once we, once we finalize the design and go out to bid, there are pieces that can either be, we'll be looking to replace either the boardwalk section with flexi pave or remove sections of the boardwalk, say to an overlook area, things of that nature. So there's other aspects of it and then reducing the amount of planting that was required. There's a certain amount of planting that was required from the wetland permit. But an overall planting scheme can be implemented later. So there's, there's areas that we can actually reduce the amount of scope in order to, uh, in order to get to a more palatable number or more, a number that is better to, you know, easier to be fundraised to.
It's just, it's, it's a lot of money for not a lot of, um, expansion of use of the park. I mean, I just, I, I mean, you know, almost eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, I just think of all of the things in town that you face and, and I guess it's one thing if it's all fundraised. But in terms of if people are going to go back to the town for additional money for this.
Yeah. You know, we have a member of the garden club here because my, my understanding is you've already budgeted, you already committed a hundred and seventy five. So this falls under the one seventy five and we've not committed one more dollar to this project. So, you know, once the one seventy five is done, it would have to go through the budget process again for any future commitment. So, you know, I know that there's been a lot of work done by the garden club and, uh, working with Tiger to get these designs. So I, I feel a little bit funny pulling back now after the money's already been budgeted and allotted. It went through the budget process.
No, I do, but, but I don't think in the budget process, we had any idea that the potential cost was so large.
Well, there's no commitment to, I mean, I think in all the conversations I've had, um, like with Judy Neville and, and, you know, I've, you know, maybe, um, you know, you can kind of let us know. I, on, my understanding is it's a garden club fundraising project after the one seventy five.
So that's a discussion I think that we need to have a little bit further. I can't speak to any exact numbers because I'm not the president of the garden club. I'm just, yeah, sorry. My name's Tori Fraser. I'm one of the co-chairs of Erwin for the New Canaan Garden Club. Um, and, um, we will be having those discussions, um, as soon as today. Um, but we do feel like this is a collaboration with the town. Um, I think the, these upfront costs have cut in a little bit deeper and, um, some of those costs we have shared. So there are bills that the garden club paid for this developmental work. Just so you know, we've been in a collaboration.
Um, do you happen to know how much the garden clubs come out of pocket?
I don't know and I don't want to conjecture right now. Um, I will say that, um, we feel like Erwin is has a really high usage rate. We feel like there's real dedication to Erwin Park. This plan does open up a whole section of the park that has never been available. Um, and, um, because of the high usage, we are hoping that there will be town support and enthusiasm for this additional piece of, you know, a walking piece. Um,
Have, have you gotten any, um, commitments already toward this project donation commitments? I mean, you probably don't have money yet, but.
From a, um, from a club standpoint, um, there have been discussions, but official fundraising has not begun. Um, um, only because of timing. I'll just say that because we didn't have, we didn't have a solid number yet, which this next step that you all are going through will bring us. So, um, but there, for years, there have been discussions about fundraising.
Yeah, and that's the, that's my recollection is that I, I was surprised to see on our agenda because I'm like, it was like a flashback, like, didn't we already do this? And it seemed like years since we've talked about it. So it's, now it's back again, which is great. I guess now we're ready to do it. But I remember there was a rush to get it through the budgeting process so that the work could begin or so that, that such things could begin. So that's why I was like, I, I didn't realize that we're going to go back again and, and sort of redo this all over again. So that was, that's my only surprise, but. I know there's support for it. There's definitely support for it. Of course, anything you guys do, there's going to be support for it. Garden club's amazing, so.
I just, I, I got it. I'd have to go back and look, but I don't think I had a sense that we were talking about this amount of money. It not even close. And, and again, I could be, I thought it was maybe two fifty all in or something like that and we were going to pick up a lot. But now what I'm hearing is that to get this, I think the, the hope is that it's a shared expense with the town. And look, all things being equal, it would be great. I just think of all the other existing projects. Wavine being a key one, you know, that, you know, I, I get worried. We, we, we take on new stuff all the time and then we aren't able to find the resources to keep up what we have. So, um, I, I'm a little hesitant to go forward with this expense without further discussions about where this could potentially, what, what type of match might be requested from the town. And, and I know it's like, yeah, the money's there, but, you know, um, to do this, but I, I, I just don't feel comfortable with the potential additional exposure for the town on this. And again, how many feet was this Tiger?
Approximately nine hundred to a thousand.
For a thousand feet. Um, and Erwin is used and it's great and it is great and it would open more of it. But I'm just thinking of all the other stuff we have to, you know, do. So I, you know, I don't know if we could.
So you're looking, you're asking for a, a more buttoned up total. We, we won't be able to.
Share, you know.
You need this to get the buttoned up total.
Yeah, I need to.
Need this for the buttoned up total.
Fortunately, the thing is we need to finalize this so I can go out to bid. I'll know the exact number. Then we can, well, I won't say value engineer, it'll be redo, reduction in scope, value engineering down to a, a number. And at that point in time, the, it was fully understood that they're going to have to fundraiser, they'd have to come back and ask the town. Board of Finance Chair is aware of that, but you know, the fact that we haven't committed a dollar past the hundred and seventy five thousand, but if we don't.
Yeah, I know, but you know, we, it's just, because we put a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, doesn't mean we, you know, we often approve things and then choose not to. Um, but again, I just, I.
I just know that there's been a ton of work because I know that there was, uh, an attempt to get some grant funding for this project. Um, we did not receive it. Um, so, you know, I know that there's been a lot of time and effort by both Tiger and the garden club to, you know, get this project executed based on the fact that they had money allotted to this project. And so I, I'm concerned about the messaging to, you know, all our clubs and not, you know, that we, you know, we're going to have this again, you know, maybe we need to be more thoughtful on the front end of allotting that money. If we, we aren't gonna let them, um, finish because, you know, I worry that, that, that we, we put it out there. They do all the work. They do, there's a lot of time, effort and expense. You know, they, I mean, I, you have no idea how much the garden club has spent to date.
I can guess, but I don't know for sure and I wouldn't want it to be in a public record if I was way off.
Okay, okay. Because that's the other thing is that the garden club has spent its own resources based on a, based on a commitment by the town that they would partner with them on going forward. I wasn't part of those discussions. So, you know, I'm, but I, but philosophically, I think all the boards, all the boards need to do a better job if, you know, either communicating to our not-for-profits that, you know, if it goes, you know, if you give me an assess, you know, if you give me a five hundred thousand dollar estimate and it's eight hundred, all bets are off. And I'm not sure that that was communicated to the garden club in this project. So that's my sensitivity. And I think, you know, I agree with you. I hate spending study money. And then, you know, and this is not an insignificant amount of study money.
Well, considering we only have after this eighty thousand of the one seventy five left.
Right.
So would it, just as a thought, would, would it be maybe possible to, um, get a little more information here? I, I would like to go back and understand where we estimated the all-in costs would be. And so I know it's been a couple of years, right? So I, I get there's escalating stuff. So where we thought it was going to be, where we thought the match was going to be, it'd be interesting to know how much the garden club has gone out of pocket on it. Just so we have a fuller picture before we spend another, you know, um, almost forty thousand dollars. Yeah, I, I mean, it's like, and look, I, I completely appreciate the work everyone's done, but there are some times like, you know, in your home, you wanted to build that additional project. You put the money in and then you realize it's way beyond scope. So I, I just, I just go back to the, you know, we, we just have to be careful about adding stuff when we have so much deferred maintenance in the town. And I think we're going to be asking for some big money for Wavine, et cetera. So if for me, I would, I would feel more comfortable evaluating this more on where we thought the costs were going to be. How much the, uh, garden, um, club has put in, um, just to feel that I, I don't want to throw good money. I don't want to say after bad, but just, you know, when a project went beyond scope, what we thought it would really cost the town. For, for, for a thousand feet of, uh.
Will two weeks make a difference in terms of the timing or?
So why don't we just? No, I think, you know what? I think let's, let's plan on having them come back to the next meeting. Um, if you could, uh, get the information about how much the garden club has invested in this project to date. Um, and then if we can get some historical information about what was presented, when was this originally?
Years ago.
Yeah, I think two years ago. I'll get.
We probably have to go to back to minutes.
Yeah. So if we can get the information on what was presented to this, to the various boards on how much this project was going to cost back then. Um, obviously we'll need to impose an inflator on that.
Of course, of course.
Uh, and then let's just make sure that that's on our agenda in two weeks.
Yeah, but at the time I thought we were thinking from a town's perspective, our contribution was about in the one seventy five range, right?
That's what we approved, a hundred and seventy five.
Right. And that, but now if in fact the costs have escalated so much, that's a heck of a lot of people to.
And what is the garden club's, um, view on how much they're assuming that they're going to need from the town? Like what do they think they are going to be fundraising for? You know, because if it is more than what we've already allotted, then you're actually asking for an additional budget approach creation through this, through this budget cycle probably. Um, so we need to know sort of what the garden club thinks that they can contribute to the project.
Thank you.
That's fine. Yeah, thank you.
I really appreciate the work and I, I just, you gotta be careful on this stuff. Yeah.
Okay. So moving on, schoolhouse.
This is a request to, um, for the contract, uh, Jay and Charlie Roofin for three, thirty eight thousand five hundred plus contingency of thirty eight fifty. Retal request of forty two thousand three fifty. Um, this project entails, uh, the, actually it's at the schoolhouse, but it's for the, uh, New Canaan daycare there. The little canopy entrance that goes into their area. It's original and, um, it's, uh, it's been, it's rotted out. I think over the years, um, things change on the earth around there. So the footings and the, um.
It's the center where you walk up the middle, like it's perpendicular. The center, where you walk up the middle, like it's perpendicular.
Right. If you're in the parking lot, look at the side of the building. It's the one to the right. It says New Canaan daycare right over it.
Okay.
And it's, we got temporary supports. They're holding up. It kind of started to sag on us. And we opened it up and looked aside there and it's, 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 we got our money's worth out of it for a hundred years. I think it's time to just take it down and build exactly, you know, in kind. They did change a lot of side of that building when they put the different windows and all stuff in nineteen ninety. So we're not looking to do a restoration and restore type of thing here. We're just looking to get a canopy that's safe, back up in place. And just so it matches.
Now, you know, that's a building that people will probably pay attention to. So, I mean, I, I would imagine, you know, you probably need to, you're planning to put back what was there.
For the most part, yes. We're going to put back the two new columns. We're going to raise them a little bit so they're not so much in the dirt. And then the same roof, we're going to do a flat roof on it like it's there now.
Okay.
Let's make sure it's pretty. It's basically what you're saying.
I, I have a feeling I might get some emails.
There's a big canopy next with the other entrance so that it all looks nice.
Because that's considered another historic building in the community. So we need to make sure that we put back what we always there.
It'll closely match what's there.
This is really helpful, Bill, putting in the approved budget amount that's just, you know, as we go through this, that's really helpful to us because otherwise.
It's easy to do.
That's great. It's great. And, and you know, the forty to three fifty, they'll cover everything. There's no other stuff that has to.
So I mean, I mean, right now it's pretty straightforward. It's just taking it down. It's such a simple canopy. I mean, I'm not going to get into engineering and architecture and all that stuff.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Jay Antonelli Roofing in the amount of thirty eight thousand five hundred dollars plus a contingency of three thousand eight hundred fifty dollars for a total cost of forty two thousand three hundred fifty dollars. The project entails the demolition of the existing entrance canopy and installing new footings, columns, framing and roofing system at Schoolhouse Apartments.
Second.
Unanimous. Thank you. All right, Wavany Lamp Posts.
This is the phase one of a two-phase project to replace the lamp posts up in Wavany Park. So we're looking to, we did go out to bid. We advertised it on the webpage and in the newspaper. We only had the one responsive bidder, F and M Electric. They've been our supplier for a lot of these lamps over the years from Steinberg. I don't know how that works, but that's how it is. And so they actually came in with a really good price.
It's all relative.
It was.
It's relative. Considering what we were paying per unit.
They went down a lot. Yeah, it's fifty six hundred dollars for a unit. When we're buying forty units at once compared to about seven thousand dollars a unit when you buy one at a time.
Same quality, same.
They're straight, just like our she lights. Exact same thing.
Same manufacturer.
Same manufacturer, same thing out here. We're keeping them all uniform. The ones that were currently in the park, the Alco ones are a lot smaller, not as well made, and they're not in business anymore. So we decided to say, well, maybe it's time to keep it a uniform here. These street light ones will last for a very, very long time.
How long do you think these will last?
In the park, they, you know, the only time we was in my streets was when somebody runs into them. You know, driving them through the parks crazy. I think they should last a very, very long time. We've also, we built a couple of our own lights here, painted them when they need to be painted a couple of times and fix them when they got broke as we can.
We have, we have existing lamp posts on the street that are twenty two years old on the street. So it's Bill's point, it's either hit by a car or when you're walking your dog, the dogs tend to do some damage, you know, as they leave their marks. So that's.
Might have to do what they do in Chicago and have the little black railing around.
A problem. And I think Steinberg understood that problem and included in that price is a coating they actually now put on the lamp post to help protect it from acid-borne type of liquids that may.
Very discreet of you.
Any, any change in terms of locations or all the locations or will we see any new spots where?
I don't anticipate any new spots. I'm just doing, replacing exactly where it is.
There might be, you know, depending upon when we talk to John and Todd, if there's other locations that we might need to add one for just for safety reasons. But predominantly, it's just a replacement. And to your point, when we first started this light pole installation project, they were fifteen hundred dollars each. So.
Like after we know this.
Over that, yeah, when, when Mike Adrinos put in, they were fifteen hundred a piece and, you know, all donated. Now we're at a seven or fifty six hundred in bulk. So.
Yeah.
So again, the approved budget line is great here. And the reason I asked you about the other one, so this is two hundred and twenty six thousand and there's there additional costs associated with this that will have to come under the budget.
Yes. This just, we're buying these direct to town. We'll get them in. It probably takes six months to get them. We'll store them on site and then I have to, I'm working on a document now to get the pricing to actually install them.
Okay, okay.
We're going to get a.
So you think there's enough room within the?
I talked to a couple of different contractors and approaches on this and we, we believe so. And phase two of the project is for next year to finish the rest of the lights. We did, we did this over two years because of the cost. And, and the amount of work, to be honest with you, it's a lot to try to do all at once. So we figured it's just split into, so.
So phase one is forty lamps and then we think there'll be how many phase two?
There'll be less at this, at this point, there should be less. Well, to our current count was almost seventy lamp posts out there.
Okay.
So forty will get.
Just at Wavany, seventy.
That doesn't include Lapham or does it include Lapham Community Center too?
Yeah, just everything in Wavany Park, yes. Yes, everything all around in there, yes. Everyone that do, and we counted them and a couple of times I counted them. And now, you know, so yes, and all down round the carriage barn in front of the powerhouse, all through.
All right. So if there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with F and M Electric in the amount of two hundred fifteen thousand four hundred dollars plus a contingency of ten thousand seven hundred seventy dollars for a total cost of two hundred twenty six thousand one hundred seventy dollars. The project entails the purchase of forty lamp posts and fixtures for Wavany Park.
So.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Tiger, compost leaf mulch.
You guys want to come up or you want to stay there? No, not you, Mike. All right.
Blue boys.
Jimmy still hasn't gone and I've told you.
So we, we went out to bid for our annual sale of composted leaf mulch. We advertised it in the paper. We received two bidders, same bidders as last year, and the same result, only slightly different in amounts. So Peter Lonnie was the high bidder. So in this case, we're selling to the high bidder at twelve dollars. Burns came in at four dollars. Yard last year, it was thirteen and two. So Peter came down a dollar, Burns went up two dollars. Peter's still the, the high bidder at twelve dollars yard.
With inflated everything, we're getting less for mulch.
Yes. Yeah, well, we have to. We're, we're, we're getting twenty four thousand dollars. We would.
No, I mean, hey, you're selling it. I like the income, but I just find it interesting that, you know, everything's going up, but we're getting less for.
Unfortunately, yes, but we have to get rid of it. So we're, I look at it as a positive twenty four thousand for something that we, we necessarily have to get rid of. We, we have about thirty three hundred yards. We sell off two thousand. We keep thirteen hundred for us to give to the residents and for our work. So at that point, we just, we need to go forward with this because we need to get the yard empty, the leaf bald site empty so that we can then begin. Get it ready and then get, get, get leaves back. So that's what we're looking for. So we'll, we'll, we'll start our leaf pickup program in November, early November, and then go from there. And then all the leaves will get deposited there and we'll start making compost again. So.
All right. Any questions? All right. If there are no further questions, if I could get a request from the Department of Public Works to sell composted leaf mulch to Peter Lonnie Inc. for twenty four thousand dollars. unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Tiger.
Next one is a purchase of an F three fifty pickup from Task Afford. It's on a state contract for sixty nine thousand six seventy eight. This is to replace one ten, one ten supervisory vehicle. And lose, lose words, it's completely stripped down except for basically has cab steps and a locking rear axle. It's about it.
And a snowplow.
Which is, which is kind of standard. So the monies are available. We actually had budgeted ninety thousand dollars for this, but since we're in a stripped down version, we're at sixty nine, six seventy eight. The ninety thousand was almost an estimate based upon previous numbers that we were getting when everything was crazy as far as timing. And, you know, everyone's, and the pricing was a little bit out of hand. So we're, we're happy that it came down to a more palatable number.
And includes a sander and a plow too.
Yeah, that's, yes, that, that second page shows the, or the third page shows the, what, what is, what is included. So there's a, we have the plow package, the plow itself, and then the hookup for the plows and then the lighting. You know, the amber lighting, emergency lighting for us.
All right. Anything that you were totally missing that, that you're not getting in this truck is? Okay. All right.
Wow, that's the right response.
He's learning.
If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Task Afford LLC in the amount of sixty nine thousand six hundred seventy eight dollars for the purchase of a new twenty twenty four F three fifty dump truck. Oh, wait, sorry.
Pickup truck, sorry. Yeah, should we pick up? That's my fault.
Okay. How old was the other truck that it was replacing?
Fifteen.
Okay.
Just, it's in rotation. That's the oldest one. Mileage like fifty, fifty three, three fifty, I think it is.
Is it just because it's hard miles?
Yes. Yeah, around sixty.
Okay.
Around sixty, we start to look and then go from there.
Okay. All right. Sorry. So I read the whole thing.
And this number includes that, are you trading that one in or?
We're going to trade this one in or possibly sell it, you know, aftermarket. So it's not included. So that'll be an additional delta kind of back. We're figuring that one's around twelve thousand, right?
Yeah, twelve, fourteen thousand, twelve to fourteen thousand. So we'll look to, to do that. So then, so there'll be a added benefit that'll go into, back into the general fund.
All right. So I think I read everything if, and pickup truck.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
Okay. It's unanimous. Thank you. Blanket purchase order, Tiger.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Jimmy. Thanks.
So I have, this is for administration and engineering for DPW. So I have three, one with Keith Simpson Associates for fifty thousand, one for Gannon Fence, twenty thousand and one for William Kenny Associates. Kenny is actually not E Y. It's just K E N N Y. The, for twenty thousand, to give you a, an idea, last year we used Keith Simpson Associates for various landscape architecture projects that varied. He was working at our, the Western Parking Lot at Lapham, the design there, a master tree plant for Wavany that was in conjunction with the Conservancy. The relief project along South Avenue that he's working with the Beautification League on that. Improvements at the pickleball courts, the Western Parking Lot at Wavany, the playground at Wavany with Ryan. And he was helping us with the, the garden at the Nature Center when we had the lead remediation all in.
Did you do Bristow or is that cost in the Bristow?
Bristow.
Bristow was a previous year, so in fiscal twenty three. So the, last year was fifty four thousand seven hundred and sixty, the year before was about seventy three thousand one hundred. I rounded it at fifty thousand. I don't see as many projects this year with Keith, but he's done excellent work. And we'd like to continue that. Gannon Fence, last year we spent thirty five nine fifty in various projects with, with Gannon. So we're asking for twenty thousand dollars. Again, I think that that's a suitable number. And then Bill Kenny Associates, last year was eighty three hundred and the year before was forty two seventy five. But he's working on some larger projects with us right now, specifically Capo, Dunning, some things at Wavany that came about because of the Capo wetland permitting where I have to look at a ditch there, you know, relining a ditch. So his service will be greatly needed during that time. So that's why I looked.
Is he like a?
He's a, he's a, he's a professional landscape architect and a certified soil scientist. So we're using him for his wetland and soil scientist work. He did do the design for the Anderson Pond, so with the, with the Conservancy. So he has, kind of wears both hats, but we're predominantly using him for his wetland knowledge and his soil scientist knowledge. He'll be working with McCord Engineering on that ditch. You already approved that contract. I'm waiting for proposal from, for, from Bill to move that project forward.
So the work he's doing related to Capo, is that get rolled into the Capo budget or is this separate?
The Capo budget, yes.
Covered by this purchase order? If it's in the Capo budget?
Well, there's additional work that's going to be going forward that I don't have, you know, that we, hasn't been approved yet. So I have to do it all in one shot. So it was in a previous year, previous fiscal year. So this coming year, there'll be work associated with it so that I have to add that into this purchase order. I don't have that approved yet.
No, I'm just confused. So the, the, does it, if the purchase, if the work, the expense for the work is covered within the Capo project, you still have to get the?
Absolutely. Any, any money expended, if it's the Athletic Foundation. Because what happens is that if like the Athletic Foundation has a project, once it's fully approved, the money gets transferred to the town. We can never transfer it back and then it's expended by the town.
Okay.
So we have to approve any expenditure, even if it's other people's money that's being.
All right. I was just trying to understand the process in there. So it's basically within, it's within the Capo project, but it's being spent through the town, which is why we have to approve a purchase order. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Purchase orders have various line items, so various account lines. So now we're able to do that thankfully because of Anne. So we're able to do that purchase order and have less than one vendor, but then several lines associated with it. So that's.
Right. So we don't have to have a two thousand dollar expense coming to this board.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to create the following blanket purchase orders as follows. Keith Simpson Associates, fifty thousand dollars, Gannon Fence, twenty thousand dollars, and William Kenny Associates, twenty thousand dollars.
So.
It's unanimous. All right. Wavany ADA Project.
So this is a request to, for approval of a change order for MKL Design Studio for thirty nine thousand six hundred plus contingency of thirty nine sixty for total cost of forty three five sixty. The change order is for the Waving House Elevator Phase and it's for architectural and engineering services. The reason being that we had, and I hope I answered your questions on that email best I could, or maybe, you know, they go back in time here, a few years. But what we end up running into was the elevator originally was designed to go to the ceiling and the manufacturers will not build an elevator without an overrun. So the overrun needs to go through the ceiling. And it's overrun means that it's a space above the final stop of the elevator above it for a person to be working and doing maintenance with the thought that if the elevator ever went up, no one would get crushed. So the manufacturers will not build an elevator without that much overrun. So they want ten feet. So we have to go through the, this ceiling. We did some test probes up there and the only piece of steel that's in the way is actually the one that supports the main lamp that hangs there, the chandelier, which we're going to shift over anyhow. So, but it does require engineering and some architectural elements to, to make that right.
So how much do we already spend on design with these guys?
Well, I summarized it in that email for you.
Yeah, sorry. I just.
Right. So the total. Right. So, yeah. So right now we're at three hundred and thirty thousand five fifty at this moment with engineering and architectural services, the thirty six thousand and we'll request and we'll bring up to three sixty seven. And you were correct on the, the monies that where you traced, you followed it. I kind of confirmed that, yes. So we're about four million dollars project right now with, that was phase one, two and three.
Okay, but so contracted amount for all three phases, right? So that's not just the elevator, right?
Right. And it was all.
But I mean, didn't we, like, you know, you're, how much do we pay already for elevator design? That's, that's what I was trying to.
Well, so it's not, I, it's kind of hard to break it all down because it was, there was a lot of overlap. They were doing phase one, two. Well, so it's not, I, it's kind of hard to break it all down because it was, there was a lot of overlap, they were doing phase one, two, and three all at the same time. So I don't know exactly, uh, I'd have to go down and try to break down every single invoice, talk to them and find out what they applied to what.
Elevator versus bathroom?
The F, level of effort for each at the time of original contract and then, you know, subsequent to that. So we'd have to go back and actually ask them to break out their um, because the elevator was part of the original overall design. So it was just inside of the design elements. We'd actually ask them, have to ask them for um, that breakout of effort. We can certainly do that and uh, see what they would say. It might come down to a percentage. They might say, oh, we spent about twenty percent of time on it. I don't know if they'll actually be able to give us a, a complete dollar value on it.
They don't, they don't invoice like uh, N A I A contract on the structure where you have the continuation sheet. They, they don't invoice like that on professional services.
When, when we paid that, right? So we designed this shaft, we, you know, talked to the manufacturer. There was never a moment where they said, hey, by the way, you need a, you need this thing to
Does it work?
So what happened was when it, it got to this phase of going out for me uh, for shop drawings, that's when the conversation started coming about when they're, they, when we gave them the premen- uh, preliminaries of where they had to be and everything. They came back saying, well, you need an overrun. And the response was, well, state of Connecticut will give you a modification that you don't have to do an overrun. And they said, well, that's fine, but we're building an overrun because we will not put our, anybody, life in danger without that, even if the state says you can do this, we're not doing it. And we, I talked to a couple of their way companies, just kind of, they're all, everybody's saying, no. No, yeah, we need an overrun. We're, it's, we're not putting no one's life in danger here just because the state says you don't have to do this. We, we want to do this because we're, else we just won't build it. I don't want no part of it. So
The irony isn't lost, I mean, that, that's called an overrun.
So the, so this three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in design work, which will go up to three hundred and sixty-seven, that is all MKL Design Studio?
That includes, yeah, yeah, he has subcontractors too, engineers, elevator consultants. There's a lot of other people that are subcontracted to that. So it's not just architectural, it's engineering, it's working with the elevator consultant. And whoever else we may have had.
So the additional design expense is not having to do with the shape of the elevator. I know there's some tweaking in there to not, you know, uh, affect the staircase. This is all due to the fact that the specs for an elevator that they initially put forward is something that elevator company won't build.
Right.
Right?
Yes, for the most part, yes. We did change, we did tweak the elevator uh, design to uh, get it to work better for us. It actually, whether or not, it's um, became a different shape where it's, it's a rectangular instead of square in that area, not doing any damage. So it actually became a bigger elevator, a whole more weight. Because of being rectangular, your leverage now is coming off of the way it tracks up, so you need a bigger motor, hydraulics. Because in a way, and you can pick up more people, it weighs a little bit more. So that had to go into all the engineering factors of all this.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to get at, okay, you've got somebody who's actually, we're gonna spend another potentially thirty or forty thousand dollars for the design of the elevator. My question is, whoever the heck designed the elevator, how much have we paid them and are we getting some consideration? You know, that, I mean, I, I have no idea if this is the right amount of money to pay somebody for design of an elevator. I, I just have no concept. And I have, uh, and um, you know, I just feel like this, this, this project is kind of this black hole. And, and I hear it's all together in one. Well, why the heck can't we break it out? And no, um, and, and maybe I'm missing something here. But it's just like, okay, here's another forty thousand dollars for, for design of an elevator, which we thought we already designed.
It's additional, and it's mostly a lot, a lot of engineering that came into play here by changing, because we're being told we had to change for the overrun. So it changes the engineering of everything. So that's a big part of this.
So, so again, so the MKL Design Studios, they were the, they were the guys uh, in charge of the entire project. They subcontracted out. So they basically, you know, um, weren't aware that you had to have a elevator secured on top? I mean, it was our mistake that we didn't give them the right credentials?
It sounds like the overrun just came into play.
It just came into play with the shop drawings. When we went out, finally get to the elevator stage, we sent all the information out to California to the elevator manufacturer. Went back and forth trying to make the first square one try to work right. And then when they came back to us, they said, well, wait a minute, we need an overrun. And we were like, we, we weren't planning on it, we were gonna go right up to the ceiling. And when they did all their calculations, the manufacturer said, no, we want an overrun. And we went back, talked to the state and everything. The state said, you get a modification that you don't have to have such a, such a large overrun for, we were gonna have a small overrun for maintenance space. And the manufacturer says, we, we don't care what your modifications and the states say, we won't do that. We don't put people's lives in danger. Somebody will get crushed.
So is, is part of this, part of this, the overrun issue, but also is part of it the redesign of the shape of the elevator too, or is this all just because of the overrun?
This is more just all of the overrun. I know we had talked a little bit about the uh, changing the shape and having, I kind of pushed back on a lot of that with them that, you know, I paid for an elevator. And so they understood that, um, hesitantly. I kind of said, no. So uh, we run into these other little issues. There's a lot involved when, with the overrun because now you're adding all this extra weight, because even though it doesn't sound like much, but now you have to support that weight. So now we're going down into the basement to support the weight. So there's, there's a lot to the engineering of this, um, because it's a freestanding enclosure. You know, we gotta make sure it's, it's secured nicely so it doesn't vibrate, rattles a lot of glass in it. So there's a a lot of particulars looking at, we're even, we even have a glass specialist looking at the type of glass we're gonna use and so there's quite a lot involved in this all there.
How about the uh, fact that you've got to go through a concrete floor there to uh,
Yes.
It sounds like, you know, here's this building that's been there forever and now we're Yeah, now we're gonna cut through a concrete floor up there. That also sounds expensive to me too.
Yeah, so um, it's interesting. Um, we did the testings where they built the building, which is just really interesting. And there's um, there's layers of concrete and framing that's all up there. And um, it's not like concrete per se like today, just the slab pieces are, but in between is an infill of concrete matter. It's a little different than concrete of today. So it's not like, that in-between space is just more fulfilled. So uh, we've cut through it before. We, we, it's, it's not that you can't do it, it's just gotta be careful when you do it.
Oh yeah, we never cut a hole this big before, though.
There's gonna be a lot of additional shoring around it as they cut through it and do their thing to reframe it.
And we know there's only one beam that runs through that space.
That's yes, because we did some test holes up there, we ran cameras all in there and we uh, couldn't find anything on the rear design or, or engineer. We couldn't figure out why would they put anything else in there, you know, because basically we're being located. And we knew that that lamp was heavy, that had to be something in there for that. And we did discover just that.
But does that, does that have anything to do with supporting the floor or will you have to cross up?
They're telling me right now, they don't believe it's supporting the floor because of the way the grid system is up there. It's kind of like a midpoint. And I think it's just for the light at this point, so.
All right.
So just kind of going through the Q and As here, so i- in the summary um, that you guys provided, so the bathroom costs, you have it's six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars and change, right? Is that uh, versus a budget of one point two million, right? So are there like soft costs that aren't wrapped up in those bathroom costs or is that what the bathroom?
Well, so originally you, we're going back quite some time, where the budgets were developed back in, I think, two thousand and twelve when KSQ did that original.
Yeah, so the, so is that a positive delta on the elevator versus we have an
When we had the um, the KSQ report, and I don't know if you were, you did, I think you were part of that back then, weren't you, when we did the building assessments and stuff, like, so I know you're involved in this portion. Did that uh, assessment of the whole building. And so we seen these numbers there. We didn't go back to try to adjust any of the budget numbers. We just knew that they were, what they were back then. And we paid, you know, to have that assessment done. So then the next step was we uh, retained money to do the so, the design and went out to bid and then these are the numbers how they came in. So
I'm, I'm sorry, Bill. So the bathroom cost is six hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Is it just the construction cost or is there soft costs involved in there?
No, that's just construction costs. Soft costs are totally separate.
Okay.
That's all part of it, that's what I think. At it, you know, um, from a percentage standpoint, we're just a tad under ten percent of soft costs for the overall four million dollars with the work.
All right. And so, and then you have elevator costs right now listed as one point six million?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what we should expect.
That's, that's construction cost, but
And, and not including it three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars or what?
Not including the soft costs, that's just your construction cost. Um, that was actually a bitter number back in, I think it was eighteen, nineteen, we went to bid for this.
Yeah, it was a long time ago.
Right, and um, when we were changing the phasing around because of COVID and all this stuff there, well, then Billy, Billy was still able to hold the one point six number for the elevator. He felt good doing that. Unfortunately, that was based on what they had back then.
Okay, so, so when we get this redesign, we're gonna have to re-figure out the cost of this.
Right, right. And we anticipated some changes going forward. So we had a, uh, we have still four hundred or five hundred thousand. Forget what I put in there, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars cash still available in the project account to that if we do a change order, we'll be using that. That's why at the end, when you see, uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I'm just putting a hundred and fifty additional funds that may be required here. Once we get shop drawings back, we iron out all the details and of course, we'll offer now until twenty twenty-six to get this done. There's gonna be another labor rate change in July. And it was just one this July too, so I don't, I'm, I'm trying to
Okay, what, what is this site work number, seven hundred and seventy?
That was all the work we did outside for the ramping, the A D ramps going, you know, the west porch.
Okay.
All that.
Is that, that have anything to do with the, so that's a loge we built up and all that stuff? So that was this phase one ADA compliance kind of
Sure, yeah.
To the first floor, okay. So, and then, so we have um, I think in, uh, and I think Anne put it all together in terms of uh, ADA bathroom elevator, uh, approximately four million dollars is the
Correct.
Budget. But, but we really don't know where this elevator is gonna come in, right?
Well, I think we have a good idea where we are now and, and with discussions with the contractor and everybody, they're feeling pretty good about some of the numbers we've been talking about. Um, he's waiting for commitment now from the manufacturer and the actual elevator installer to give him a number, if they'll commit to a number that far out or get something at least close to that, uh, without coming in too short. So he's working on that. And so far, everybody wants to do this project. And, you know, to have a project on the books, it's good to have a project on the books, you're gonna do it, you know, we're going forward. They, they know we're invested in this. So I'm hopeful that we can um, still work with these guys and, you know, they won't, you know.
So if I add all these numbers up, we got six sixty-three, one point six, that's two point two, say another eight hundred thousand. Um, that's three million plus uh, three hundred and sixty-seven, so it's like three point four million plus or minus.
Something like that.
And we have authorized, it's a four million, is that correct? Am I looking at that correctly? And so in that, with that, that will get us the building, basically ADA compliant, including getting to the second floor.
We have a few little things that are, we're going through that report on, but they're just thresholds and stuff like that. Also, within these numbers, the one thing that we did not uh, budget for, but we were able to work within these numbers was by code, we had to rebuild that exterior means of egress, the so-called fire escape aside.
Right.
Right, so
And that's within this, it's already taken.
We were able to squeeze that in there. And that was a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of work that was um, not
That's, that's in here, right? It's already, so, so we're at, you know, with these numbers, plus or minus, it's uh, three point four million against our four million authorization, plus or minus. And I know you have some other stuff to do. So um, you know, I'm, I'm hoping we have enough cushion within that to get done.
We're gonna try. I mean, I'm, I'm beating up the guys pretty good as it is. And it's kind of hard to have beaten up leverage when we keep pushing the timeframe out. But all the Billy's been really good about it. I mean, he wants to get the job done, obviously. Um, but he's got, he's got a lot invested in at this point that he's sticking it out and gonna try to work the best he can with us to get this thing done.
But, but you know, for the taxpayers to understand, to get this building that was built over a hundred years ago, and if anyone's gone in it, it's got absurd numbers of steps up and down everywhere.
Yeah.
And we want to be able to use it for the town. So it's, it's caught, gonna cost us in the four million dollar range to get this ADA compliant. And then we should be good on the ADA.
For the elevator.
No, the elevator, no, the all-in, all-in. The, 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 the work that done already to, to get the first floor, the bathrooms in the elevator.
But aren't there still some ADA uh, things we signed off on that aren't part of this?
Some signage, yeah, some, some stuff that were, as Bill mentioned, we have some thresholds that we have to take care of. There's uh, the sconces are too low.
See, I mean, like, this is not all.
No, it's only for, it's only for the project that was specified. That's correct.
Put in uh, this year's budget, I think it was a half million to deal with ADA stuff across the town? Okay, sorry, sorry.
Yes, yeah, and that, that
That giving up cushion for that, you think?
Yeah, that will, that will take, that was um, uh, for the, the items that were in the report and for other items that we see throughout town. So they had um, they, they like to see um, uh, accessible signage, accessible root signage. They wanted, like I said, the sconces, some of the thresholds are slightly too high, things of that nature. Yeah, but there isn't a lot left at Waviney. Once, once this work is done, there, it's very small. Um, Joe likes to use word knits and knats, that's what's in my head, but it's very small pieces um, left to then make the building compliant.
Yeah, but there, within what we've, we've authorized for it, there is a, like approximately a six hundred thousand dollar cushion. Right? From what we just added up, we, we authorized four million. We add these up, plus the design got us to about three point four.
Right, and like I said, there's, there's still cash available there, but we're anticipating using that for a change order between the labor rates disextension.
But that's a big number, six hundred thousand dollars. That's a lot of money. So hopefully not.
Yeah, well, so hopefully, like I said, we're trying to fit it all within the monies we have. We may have to come back for a little bit more. We don't know until we get the shop drawings back. And that's where we're
Yeah, again, that's six hundred thousand dollars. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of cushion.
Things already there, like we lowered the bandstand because it was easy to do and they, the department dressers was there, pointed it out and I said, I got crew right here, let's just do it and get it off the table. And so we took care of the uh, so-called the low hanging fruit that we were able to tack right away over there. Um, we, we took care of that. And uh, this winter, we will do some work. We still, you know, the men's bathroom, the lower level there by the kitchen, that's uh, part of this project. And that's gonna be the family ADA bathroom. So we're gonna do that. And it's where we do have a compliant bathroom, at least on that main level. So we're gonna do that and we have some electrical work to do.
Right, and that should fit in within this bu, within that. Beyond that, what we've talked about here, there are other pieces, the family bathroom and stuff like that, that will take some funds.
Family bathroom's in this project, Bonnie. It's already here. It's already, it's already part of the contract. So we're moving forward. We, it's, it's, it's a, it's a juggling act because it is waving, there's a lot of events going on. We can't take one bathroom out and then not have nothing. So we're trying to, it's a shell game. It's very, that's why these timeframes again, really tough over there.
Right.
Yeah, they, they book things way out in the future. So we, we don't want to go in there and try to cancel anything, but we're trying to work around everybody's schedule.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is given what you told us money wise, okay, and yeah, we know we have to rebid some stuff, but there's still a lot of money within that four million dollars that we authorized. And I would be, hope we come in under that. And just because it's authorized, we have, we don't need to spend just because it's authorized. Let's, let's get it done.
I understand. We, we don't want to do that. We want to, you know, listen, it, it's good
I don't want you to come back, so.
Don't like coming and asking you guys for more money, trust us. We don't like that. It's not a good feeling for anybody. It's an awkward conversation. You know, we love coming in with a project saying we came in under budget. It was, it, it just fortunately, just times, it's essentially just out of our control. We open up, we open a can of worms sometimes when we look, look inside something.
So if we get this redesign done, I, I, I'm hoping we have confidence we get this in Q one, two thousand and twenty-six.
That's the, the plan right now.
But, but we can't let that slip again.
Factory about the time.
That's a lot of
Was it seven or eight months, I think, to manufacture it and it's all fitting within that timeframe. So uh, the, the, the goal would be to have it all designed ready and have it shipped right the week before, two weeks before we're ready to start installing it.
Yeah, but I thought we were gonna do that this year. That's why I'm worried, right? I thought we were gonna try to hit it this year. So I'm, I'm worried that we just gotta prioritize this to get it done. We've been talking about this, it's what, two thousand seventeen?
To shift some things out. I mean, part of it was, you know, being responsive to waving house usage and um, and timing, because some things slipped a little. It really impacted waving house usage. So we said, you know what, let's just shift it all out so that we can get it done. Have waving house used the way we want to use it for the year. So part of it is on us that we wanted to make the building still accessible for usage.
Okay.
And um, so, yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the background.
Okay, any other questions? If not, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works for a change order with MKL Design Studio LLC. In the amount of thirty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars plus a contingency of three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. For a total cost of forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. The project entails a change order for the Waviney House elevator phase, and includes the Architectural Engineering Construction Administration Services.
So moved.
Second, it's unanimous, thank you.
Can we make sure that we get this summary put in?
It's, it's. It should be in, on the pads. I, yeah, cause yesterday, I remember printing it out, because it was so small, but let me, I'll double check.
Yes, it is, it is, okay, it is, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Capo Field Phase One.
Alright, so I'm, I'm joined by uh, Mike Benevento, um, chairman, chairman, chairman of the New Canaan Athletic Foundation. That's the like eight thousand times, the um, and uh, we're very excited to bring forward the uh, the Capo Field renovation project. What we, what the, the, what we did was, we went out to three separate turf manufacturers, because it's all about the turf. As far as what the actual overall playability and the, the playing surface will be, we interviewed all three. Um, the working group that we had was members of the Athletic Foundation, uh, Parks and Recreation, DPW, the school. And then the consultants that we had, Richter and Seegan, um, and the architects. And we chose AstroTurf as the predominant winner, across the board, everyone selected AstroTurf. At that point in time, when you select your turf, then they have their preferred installer. Their preferred installer is Athletic, Atlantic Sports Group, ASG. The benefit to that is that Atlantic Sports Group, actually, the majority of their items are on a Sourcewell contract, and we're also on a KREK contract. The KREK contract and the Sourcewell contract were very similar. Sourcewell contract was less expensive, because KREK actually adds a percentage onto it that you actually, that the contractor has to pay KREK for. So that was, that was an interesting new thing for us as well, I didn't realize that, that there was a fee paid back to KREK by the contractor that you select. So we chose to go with the Sourcewell contracting, and from there, there's a laundry list of items from the turf. To the gravel, to the drainage layers, everything associated with the installation of that turf. Basically, the quantities go in, they've already been vetted, as far as their unit pricing, um, there's a actual um, uh, discount from Sourcewell, and then the unit price. And then that tallied up to the end at four million, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. Which was a nice uh, change from what our original estimate was, it was around six million. Um, so given our original uh, cost estimate, the cost estimator had given us at about six million dollar cost. Atlantic Sports Group came in at uh, just under five million dollars on a Sourcewell contract. We felt uh, confident to come forward at that time with this contract adding on a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contingency. Uh, for a total of five million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. And pending approval from the board, the Athletic Foundation will wire the money from the community that they have stored at the Community Foundation to the town. And then we can bring the contract that they on it to be signed. They will hold the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in contingency, only because if they give us the two fifty, we can't give it back. So if there's monies needed for the project, um, you know, say, say an unforeseen item, we're not looking at any, um, might as well, or we're here. Um, kinda thing, anything that would be necessary from a, from a standpoint of that it was unforeseen. Then the Athletic Foundation would wire the monies over, but we're just asking for the approval to then keep the contract moving, since uh, we'd like to see.
So the Athletic Foundation holds a contingency in escrow, right?
That's correct.
I get why you don't.
Yeah, we've, we've done that with the Conservancy um, predominantly, uh, as well as other groups, but so that they hold it, because it's very difficult. Once it comes into our coffers to give it back, normally, we actually have to apply it to a pending project, which is, we don't wanna keep their money and applying it to another pending project that we might do together. So they hold the contingency and bring it forward, and it's, it's been successful with other groups um, and the, and the Athletic Foundation, so we, right, so we've done it before, sorry, Ed, yeah. Um, so that's, that's uh, so they'll hold that, so overall, those are the uh, that, that's our request.
Is that we have, the, the town is, town is contributing two million dollars to this, this project. And then the Athletic Foundation will contribute the two million, seven, 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 six eighty-five, correct?
Two, two million, nine, seven, seven.
Two million, nine, seven, seven, three million.
Six, three, yeah, just under three million.
Just under three million.
In, in that, this gets you the entire project, everything you expected, right?
Everything that we started from the design work to value engineering it down to the getting, you know, through the constructor, the soft costs that we've already put in for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And uh, there's a little bit more than that, yeah. And yes, got us to a place that everybody's happy with what we got.
When would groundbreaking be, and would you get it, would, can you build it on the timeframe you have the?
Hundred percent, that's, that's, we've, we got the money together to be able to put a shovel on the ground shortly. Like before the spring of, or, you know, to be completed for the spring season. Which was a big part of the note, to get, the big part of the motivation of getting all the donors to get the money.
So you want, you'll be on the agenda for the other two boards? Does this need to go?
No. We've done through all the.
You've done all of them, so this is it.
We did, we did Wetlands, we did P and Z, and then the, the boards were just, Board of Finance was just making sure that they had the money and the monies were in our coffers.
Okay, so this is final.
Right, this is the final approval.
Okay, so this came in a full million below?
The initial construction estimate.
Didn't we, it wasn't like six two, it's like a million two.
Around there, six, one, six, two, something like that, but it was, it was surprising, it was the, the most pleasant surprise I've got.
Yeah, you don't generally get those, yeah, yeah.
Well, it includes, like, when you look through this, all the breakdown, and they broke it all out, I mean, it includes masonry backstop wall, backstop medding posts, home doorway dugouts, drainage, pedestrian walkways. I mean, it's pretty complete. Uh, non-field furnishings, batter's eye screen, foul poles, fence guards, batting cage structure, fence screen, guard benches, I mean, this is all, it's pretty complete. It was a thorough, thorough process.
Alright, that's, congratulations.
This includes like the outfield, uh, all the fences in the outfield as well, right? That's, that's all in there. Originally, some of the plans uh, looked like there were some plantings out there, but this doesn't include any plantings yet.
No, not yet, no, we were originally thinking of, uh, yeah, it's like, it's like Camden Yards, it's a, or somebody has.
No, like uh. But that can be done, that.
That can be, yeah, yeah, bushes and plantings along the outside to screen the, the fencing from view, yeah, that can be done at a later date.
That's great, wow, what a nice surprise.
Do we don't generally get those surprises?
Gonna be excited. This is, this is a long time coming.
Alright, this is called Capo Field Phase One.
The only reason we called it Phase One is because there was things that we had taken out of it, um.
The grandstand.
The grandstand, the, the um.
Some of the things that we originally value and go down that were nice to have, not necessarily need to have. They've been designed in case we ever wanted to add them on in the future.
Right, that, that's why I wanted to differentiate, because they had been scaled down, P and Z had approved them, Wetlands had approved them in entirety.
Okay.
But, so we had the entire project approved, so we wouldn't have to go back to those commissions for approval. But then we had to scale it down for uh, you know, fundraising effort, so. Um, but yeah, that's why I labeled it Phase One, only because it didn't want everyone to think that that original plan was the plan. So the, to Mike's point, the ble, uh, the grandstands, the um, home locker room, things of that nature were, were taken out originally.
So if, if something, some benefactor wanted to do Phase Two?
It's been designed, it's been designed, and we, right, it's been designed, it's been approved by the, the commissions, that was the biggest thing, was that would be. Would be coming back, and then uh, that would have to.
Go through the three boards.
We would have to go through the three boards, because we're capped right now. At uh, at the, at the amount that was approved in the.
The all-in amount.
Yes, we'd have to get that approved through the three uh, three boards, more because of the BACH Amendment. Um, which is, you know, the expenditure, the town council has to prove expenditures on town land.
Okay.
They have to start somewhere, I mean, this is such a great start, because you know, think back to what, what Dunning, Dunning Field or Dunning Stadium was when it started and what it is today. I mean, there's been so many things added to that facility over time, based on generosity of residents and donors. And I, I would see this is gonna be very similar, where you start with the field, and then over time, you're gonna be able to add all the amenities to it, so.
And it's a really nice start.
That's a really nice start.
Okay. There are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works and the New Canaan Athletic Foundation to enter into a contract with Atlant- Atlantic Sports Group. In the amount of four thou, four million, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars plus a contingency of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For a total project cost of five million, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. The project entails the regrading of the existing area and installation of underground infrastructure. To support the construction of a synthetic turf field for high school varsity baseball use, and maybe we should have added that, some other things on there.
General town use.
General town use, I'm adding that, I'm adding that. Um, the funds will be provided by the New Canaan Athletic Foundation and the town of New Canaan.
So moved.
It's unanimous, thank you.
I thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's no tree in the outfield, right?
No tree in this outfield.
What are you gonna do? All your free time not coming in for the boards.
Go back to my job.
Alright, thank you, Mike, for all your.
Amazing, amazing.
Alright.
Alright.
Generations, this'll be amazing.
Yes, alright, so you have contracts under ten thousand before you, if you have any questions? Alright, okay, moving on, and if we can go to the overpayments, tax overpayments. Those motor vehicles, everybody's selling their cars, get rid of cars, we, we, you like the turnover, you like the turnover.
Later, yeah.
Usually goes up, okay, um, if I could get a motion to approve refund or tax overpayments?
Second.
It's unanimous, thank you. Um, any selectmen comments? I kind of made mine earlier.
Yes, good.
Okay, if I could get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous, it's ten fourteen.
Oh, pretty good.
Yeah, yeah.